Good evening. I am hereby calling to order the special council meeting of August 13, 2018. May I have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mr. Bellistria?
President.
Mr. DeJohn?
Here.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Here.
Mr. Mano?
Here.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Here.
Mrs. Snyder?
Here.
Mrs. Tressi?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Since this is a special council meeting, we're not going to have any public communication, but we're going to ask if anyone has any questions pertaining to a particular item on the agenda and the persons in the audience. They'll be allowed to come up and answer any questions. So we will move straight to resolutions tonight. We will begin with Resolution 2018-50. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution number 2018-50, a resolution approving a lot consolidation of Cuyahoga County permanent parcel numbers 863-07-123, 863-07-124, 863-07-125, 865-07-126. And I think that's a typo. Let me double check that. It is 865-07-126 and 865-07-057. So that's to create one parcel. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Sabetta, seconded by Mr. Bellistria. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Bellistria, seconded by Mrs. Tressi. Discussion. Any comments? Mr. DeJohn?
Does anybody know why all of these lots were separated? Since that building's been one building since as long as I remember it.
Mayor?
Ben? Well, the applicant is here, but those were always separate parcels dating way back, and they were never consolidated before. And this was done on the sewer district's request to put them all together because they no longer want sewer lines crossing over other properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Saying none. Roll call, please.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Resolution 2018-50 has been adopted. Next, we'll move on to Resolution 2018-51. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution 2018-51, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an extension of the current agreement with DataServe Integrations LLC for computer and other information technology-related services and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mrs. Sabetta, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Snyder, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Any discussion? Mayor?
No. Thank you, Madam President. Again, as I stated in the memo, excuse me, that's in your packets, this is just to bring the one part of the contract in order, or to make it the same term as the rest of the Data Serve contract, which when we talked last year, when we were going to, when we did approve this, that it was better if everything came due at the same time, if the contracts all ran concurrently instead of separately.
Makes sense. Mrs. Tressi?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So last year, I asked that specific question on why we didn't do it all at the same time last year. And the Data Serve people were here and said they didn't want to do the platform for three years like we did the other section of the contract. Part is monitoring and part is platform. And they, they wanted to, I mean, I have the contract from last year in the conversation. They wanted to keep it separate.
Mayor?
Separate contracts?
Right.
Correct. They still are separate contracts, but now they are on the same term.
Yeah.
So these aren't combining the contracts?
No, no. I know they're not, because one is monitoring for what, that's one thing, and platform is another. But last year, I wondered the same thing. Why weren't we doing what we're doing today? Why didn't we do it last year?
Because we were waiting for that contract to expire first, because the terms were more beneficial to us as it was.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Resolution 2018-51 has been adopted. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2018-52. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution number 2018-52, a resolution accepting a certain bid for road salt. The proposed contractor is Morton Salt, Inc. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Bellistria, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Roll call, please, on the suspension.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Mano?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bellistria. Discussion. Mr. Mano?
Why such a tremendous increase in the price of the salt?
Mr. Finaro?
Shortage.
Come on up. Please talk into the mic. The residents are complaining they can't hear the people at the podium.
Mr. Mano? Curgill ran out of salt last year, so they now have to mine, which I found out is a two-year process before they restart. That is why prices of salt went through the roof.
Wasn't that bad?
The state, the state contract, they were out the year before. The state contract also more than doubled.
Any other questions? Mrs. Tressi?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Finaro, is there any way we can somewhat cut back on what we use? I know, I mean, I understand we can't control the weather and how often you have to plow, but...
That's something if you would like to look at. We do provide a level of service in our winter manual that...
Next to none.
That the residents seem to like, but if that's the way council wants to go...
No, I just, I...
I would, I would not suggest cutting the service.
I didn't know there was any way.
I did, I did ask Mr. Murphy and Mr. Truby, you remember a few years back, where there was a little price gouging going on, we got some refunds. I did ask both of them if they could look into the Attorney General, see if there's something we could at least get on a list for, because things just don't break the show.
Thank you, Mr. Finaro.
Any other questions? Roll call, Lisa, please.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Resolution 2018-52 has been adopted. Next on our agenda are ordinances. We'll start with ordinance number 2018-26. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ordinance number 2018-26, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Mayfield Heights to enter into a collective bargaining contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association, Police Supervisory Bargaining Unit, and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Sabetta?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bellistria. Any discussion? Saying none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mano?
Abstain.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Abstain.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Abstain.
Mrs. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Ordinance 2018-26 has no action taken. Next on our agenda is ordinance 2018-29. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ordinance number 2018-29, an ordinance amending Chapter 121 of the Codified Ordinances of the City titled "Council" by amending Section 121.02R. Voting. Second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We need a motion to suspend. Do we have a motion to suspend, please? Moved by Mrs. Snyder, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Roll call, please.
Mr. DeJohn?
No.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
No.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
No.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Ordinance 2018-29 will be placed on third reading. Next on our agenda is ordinance number 2018-30. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ordinance number 2018-30, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, providing for the publication of such new matter, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mrs. Sabetta, seconded by Mr. Bellistria. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Mano? Seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Any discussion? Saying none. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Ordinance number 2018-30 has been adopted. Next, we'll move on to motions, and just so you know, I just kind of numbered them A, B, C, D down. So we'll start with Motion A. Mr. Murphy, please.
Motion to confirm the decision of the Planning Commission regarding two-directional signs for alterations expressed at 6570 Mayfield Road, contingent on modifying the entrance sign to "Enter Only," additional parking in rear, and adding an additional pavement arrow to the entrance driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Snyder, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Bellistria?
Yes. When, on the Planning Commission, when I went out and viewed the property, it was a few weeks ago, and there was one-directional arrow for the entrance and two-directional arrows, or vice versa, for the exit. And since then, went back to the property, and they had done some resurfacing on that lot, and put one-directional arrow on the entrance, ingress and egress, and put it in the middle. So the recommendation that came from Planning Commission was mine, to have two-directional arrows, because it wasn't equivalent on both sides of the drive. But now it appears that what they've done is put one in the center of ingress and egress. And I'm okay with leaving that the way it is. We would have to make a motion to modify this motion, if so be it.
Mr. Mano?
You know, that, that corner is a, is a real safety concern, because people come off that freeway ramp and just loop right around and go down Parker. And you need something substantial to make sure that they know that if they're going there, they gotta go in that driveway, and they can't have anybody try to get out that driveway. So that, that could be a real headache over there on that corner. That's, that's a very dangerous spot. Every time I come off the freeway, most of the cars in front of me just make the loop and go down Parker.
Correct.
So...
Mrs. Sabetta?
I too did go and look at the property. That's new, blacktop, and that arrow is very thick. And having the signs, which you don't have now, they do have temporary ones, I think would really help. You know, it's, I think if we ask them to put more arrows, it, it's gonna really be a hardship for the owner, because it's new and done, and it's big. It's big, arrow's very big and in the center of the direction.
Mrs. Snyder?
I was just thinking, my thoughts through, so the entrance, Mike, will be out only, exiting out to the back of the building?
Yes. You have to go around the building to exit.
Away from the corner.
And that's a tight corner, actually. If you drive that lot, it's actually a tight corner going around the building as well. So the signage is needed, as well as some direction on the, on the pavement. And that was the recommendation, that came from the Planning Commission.
Mr. DeJohn?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Bellistria, are you saying there's, both of those signs are gonna be there, or they're decided against it? Why do we have to make another...
The signs will be there, yes.
Okay, but why, why do we have to make a...
The language was just, there was some small print on the signs that had, said rear, rear entrance, and rear entrance in the back, and we just took those off of the sign, and it was small and difficult to read, and it wasn't necessary. So it just would say "Exit Only" and "Entrance Only."
So I guess my, my question is, I see the need for them, but why does it have to be a four-foot-tall sign with the legs of the sign? Why does it need to be that, that tall?
Well, if, if, if you're coming around that corner, if you were to put that on the, on the ground, I think it'd be difficult very to see, as Mr. Mano suggested. So having a little bit of an elevation there is gonna be, for safety reasons, I think it would be more apropos for that particular piece of property.
Does, does that fit within our, our ordinances?
Mrs. Tressi just asked me that same question, and it does.
Madam President?
Mayor?
Yeah, it is two feet off the ground, and then the sign itself is four feet. So it, it...
Two feet.
Not two feet. I meant, two feet off the ground, then the sign itself is two feet. That's, so the total is four feet. That was within, when we talked to Mr. Jamison about it, that's within the code. It's, typically, you don't allow these type of signs, but directional signs. But for, in this case, for safety reasons, we felt that was a good idea there, and especially at that height, to make them more visible, because you don't want anybody coming out that driveway. And I don't think you want anybody missing that driveway, you know, slamming on their brakes, thinking they gotta back up or to try and get in there. So we just felt for safety reasons that that was the way to go. But I do have a, if I could, a question for Mr. Bellistria.
Please.
Mike, it's my recollection that, and you have the, the packet there from planning, I think that was already done with the one, with the one arrow. And I think he agreed to put another one there anyway. I believe. I, I may be mistaken, but...
When I went back to the, Madam Chairman...
Please.
When I went back to the, the site, it looks like this might have been an older aerial photograph.
Okay.
And then when they did, and that's what I saw when I visited the property, it was weeks ago, before planning. And then when I went back, Mrs. Sabetta observed that, actually. And, and I went back to the property, and they, and they redid that arrow on that. So it does not look like what was presented to us at planning.
Okay.
Arrow was in the middle of the driveway, a single arrow.
For some reason, I remember seeing a more recent picture at that meeting. I was thinking it was, that lot was dark and that arrow was redone already, but I, I could be mistaken, so...
Mrs. Tressi?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a kind of a two-part question. First, if we allow this sign because it is, the size is four foot, are we going to set a precedent because there was an issue with another directional sign where we made that sign become smaller than what was requested? And that was a, you know, there was a lot of ta-ta-ta going back and forth on that, and, and we insisted it be a smaller sign and meet the code, and now we have a sign here that's four foot tall. So that doesn't seem fair. And then will we set a precedent by doing this? And my other, the second part of my question is, because it's such a short distance from the corner, as Mr. Mano said about turning that corner and coming down the street, would it be more feasible to have the entrance on the back, so that people pulled in the back and then parked around the front and came out the front instead, similar to what you do at, well, the reverse of what you would do at US Bank, basically?
Madam President?
Mayor?
The safety issue we saw, and traffic-wise, having people try to get out that front driveway was a real issue, especially if traffic's backed up there, worried about them coming out that drive and then blocking Parker. So, and the safety issue. If somebody's sitting in the middle of that road blocked because they can't get out, and then somebody comes around the turn, I think that could be, that's a more serious issue, I think, than, it's easier to have them go around back, they have more room to, you know, get in queue for the light, and it just seemed more logical that, to have it done that way.
Mayor, I have a question. So what did they do then, in the, with the mattress door? Well, I can't remember. Was it the first, was in the, a mattress door there?
Yeah, there was a mattress door. You mean, as far as entrance and...
Yes. I don't remember either.
I hate to say it, but...
I drive by there a hundred times a day.
I didn't think it mattered. Nobody was going in and out.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, I understand we're making an issue here, but it, what do we do?
I really don't think traffic was an issue there, and I don't, I think that that arrow was probably there from, from when the mattress door was there.
Mr. Bellistria?
Just to add to, so some clarification, Mrs. Tressi's question, parking is all angled, too. If you look at the overhead...
No, I didn't.
You'd have to change all the parking orientation.
Because it's the reverse. Yeah.
To reverse it. So just so you know that it's all set up that way on, on the property itself.
And, and what about the precedent we're setting with the size?
I think we take each, each case on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, just because of the, the way this property is, and it's in such a precarious area in our city, that this was a situation that Planning Commission felt that this was warranted for safety reasons. And I don't think it's gonna be, set a precedent, you know, because we'll have to look at each case individually. And if there's something that we believe that's, it's more conducive to do this for safety, then we're gonna do it.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As I've said before, every property is unique, and you take it as an individual property, and yes, somebody could make an argument that, you know, you did it for them, you allowed this, so you should allow it for us. But they would have to show then the similarity in the properties, the safety issue and that. And I would argue strenuously that just because you allowed it here doesn't mean you would allow it anywhere else, because, as I said, each property is unique.
Mr. DeJohn?
Mr. Bellistria, you said they were all diagonal spaces. Does that include the south side of the property? It's not showing that on the diagram.
I, I believe.
Yeah.
No, I don't believe those are, I believe those are directly pulling horizontally to the, so procurative spaces.
Parking spaces and, and do they...
No, I don't even think they, I don't think they're, they're parallels. Yeah. They're parallels along the western edge, or south, southern edge. Southside, yeah. They're parallels.
And is there enough room for people then to back out of those spaces, since they are not diagonal?
Yeah. I think the reason they did that is because there's limited space in that drive.
Mrs. Snyder?
Two quick questions. I can't picture On Parker, if there's a sign before you come to that back park driveway stating "Do not block driveway entrance." I believe there is, isn't there?
No? We're so observant.
There's an issue of traffic around the corner. That's what I thought.
I feel like there was, too, but I don't remember.
So maybe that might be something to look at. If there isn't one there still, then maybe putting that On Parker, so that people don't block that back entrance. So it'd be before the brake place.
I feel there is one right there, yeah.
And then the other question is, is I know we have done this before, and I only remember one specific location, where we made signs contingent to that specific business. So I don't know if this is something that, since it hasn't, we haven't had signs there that big before, maybe if we make it specific to this business, because this type of alterations might be where people are coming and going quite frequently, so they might get more business. I know that I remember seeing them at Golden Gate, and they did have quite a bit of business back there. So, and it's quick business, you're not in there for hours, typically.
Right.
So maybe if we made this contingent to that business, if people are uncomfortable with the size of the sign, that might be an option. But I don't know what that's specifically called.
I guess my question is this. It does not, Mayor, need a variance?
The site?
No. Then what's the question with the directional signs, Mrs. Tressi? If it doesn't need a variance, then why did we have to think about it in the past?
No, no.
Me? Yeah, what you were referring to about the problems we had in the past with directional signs, did they need a variance? I wasn't a part of it.
Oh.
Somewhere else?
Yeah, somewhere else. Yeah, somewhere else.
Okay.
It was just the size of the directional sign in the past.
The size, okay.
It was the size.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to be an issue, and we didn't get sued or whatever, because we're allowing it here, but we didn't allow it anywhere else.
Okay, I understand.
You heard Mr. Murphy's comment. He can defend anything.
Thank you. You know, on this one, Lisa, could we go for a roll call, please?
No, we have a motion to amend.
Oh, okay. Mr. Bellistria has a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. And we know what the amendment is?
The motion would be to amend that to allow them to have one central directional arrow on the pavement in the ingress and egress as it currently is viewed currently.
Everyone got that? One arrow opposed to two?
Madam President.
Please, Mayor.
Mike, I think you need to clarify that. Just for, I don't think Diane understood, that's all.
There was originally on the overhead, there was two directional arrows on the egress and one on the ingress. When I went back to the site, there was one larger arrow on each side, on the ingress and egress. So when we made the recommendation on planning, it was based on what I had seen weeks before and on the serial photograph. But since then, they have, it looks like they surfaced a little bit, and they put an arrow, one large directional arrow on both sides, and I think that would suffice.
I got it. Okay.
Thank you. So now we have a first and second for the motion to amend. Can we have a roll call, please, on the motion to amend?
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Can we have a roll call, please, on approval?
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Motion A stands approved, and now we will move to motion B. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Motion to reject the bid of specialized construction ink for the 2018 Road Program B.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Bellistria, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Bellistria.
I saw Mr. Gerson move up to the front, so he knew it was coming. And just a question, why do you believe there was such a disparity between what they came in and what your engineering should have been?
I don't want to give too much information, because I want to rebid it, and they'll probably be one of the only bidders again. But, yeah, last year they were about a dollar square yard. This year they were up to three dollars. I think maybe, could be they were busy. He did say that if you're going to award it, then do it soon, because they were busy in the next couple of weeks. And I told him I didn't know what council was going to do, but I said I didn't think we could award it anyways, 10% over. So we probably would rebid it. And I said it would be later this year. We still have time to have it done. There were a lot of things that were high. The partial depths were high. The striping was high, so, but a lot of the crack sealing was high. It's a special type of crack seal we use. It's a fiber base type III. Unfortunately, they're one of the only companies that do it. So typically, we always get these same companies that bid it. To remember, last year, we bid it early. Same company bid it. They were a hundred and some odd thousand dollars. We rebid it again, and they were $65,000 on the next time. So I'm hoping we rebid it, we get some better numbers from them. The other thing we'd like to do is, when we rebid it, take out the lander portion of it. Just to give you an idea, we're on the road program currently that we're under contract with. We are about two-thirds away through the contract in terms of work, and we're about halfway through the dollars spent. What I'd like to do, if we can, and I'll talk to Mr. Murphy after that, is to extend the contract for the contractor to do basically a, what they're doing on the rest of part of lander, to lease a portion of lander. So instead of getting 600 square yards of partial depth repair, which we had in the contract for $45,000, plus crack seal for $25,000 in this contract, we can spend a little more money, get better product. In other words, fill it down, do the repairs, and resurface it. It'll be disruption to lander north or south of the freeway, but I think we'd be in good money spent if we can. And then not rebid it, because just the numbers were high from this contractor for that type of work. And I think it's generally, although he does paving, his red butter lease on this is a crack seal. So we're kind of getting two different types of companies out there, two different workmen out there to do the product. But that's really up to you. At least, if nothing else, we can rebid it without the lander portion in there. So I can try to answer some questions. I'm sure there may be some.
Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gerson, the estimate that you gave us in the Public Works meeting in May 2018 is a lot different now than from what you're writing in your memo to us.
What was it? You say a lot different?
Do you want me to say what it is?
Or you can give me it. You can say what it is.
Yeah, so I'll just give it to you, so in case you want to keep it confidential, so you can rebid this.
Any other questions? No? Okay.
Yeah, in terms of the work, the work is very similar. The one thing we didn't have in this is we added the striping to it. So between what we bid, in terms of going out public bid, we added the striping. But the quantities are very similar. And the total cost is very similar to what my engineer's estimate was. So engineer's estimate was $106,000, I think. $106,553, and this one was $103,202. So the, what we gave you in May is very similar in terms of the cost. The difference is, this doesn't have the striping in there. But the bid that came back is $160,000, so well over what we estimated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bellistria.
And so you're requesting of council to reject the bid tonight, and then rebid.
Correct.
Can we rebid with and without? Can we ask them?
We could.
To give a bid with and without the crack seal?
Yeah, so what they would do is, if you want to do it that way, that's not a bad idea. We could rebid exactly what we had in here. And what I would suggest is that we put in there as anything that does with landers, so the striping, which solves the turn lane issue down at the end of Cedar, the partial depth repair and crack sealing of lander. We would do that as an add alternate.
That way, we could...
It'd be a base bid, and then an add alternate, and then we could either award both, or we could award just part of it.
And then we could see what they bid out for that portion versus what the other company might do that, or similar work for.
We could.
Do a comparison.
What you're trying to, so the other, the other thing, what you're trying to do is, are you trying to get a, let me clarify, are you trying to get an asphalt company coming in and do the work to all of lander? And then bid it that way, and then add crack sealing? We could do it that way, too. That's another option. So to clarify, what you would do is, in that case, I think what you would want to do is bid out the asphalt work as a base bid, and do the crack sealing as the alternate. Because you're going to get more, you're going to get more asphalt companies bidding the asphalt work. And then they would typically sub with this company to do the add alternate, the crack sealing work.
Worth a shot.
And I think that would be a good way to go. It's a good idea if council wants to do that. I can try to clarify that, if I need to clarify at all.
Anything else?
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Bellistria?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Motion B stands approved. Next, we'll go to motion C. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Motion to authorize revising specifications and re-advertise for the 2018 Road Program B.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Snyder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bellistria. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Next, we'll go to motion D. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Motion to authorize the GPD group to provide engineering services for Ashcroft area partial reconstruction in the approximate amount of $60,000.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Bellistria. Seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Any discussion?
Mayor, anything?
This was discussed by, at the Road Program meeting. So the Public Works and Services, I'm not sure if you guys have anything you want to add. This is just to get a jump on the engineering specs or...
For next year.
Correct. Anything you want to add with this?
Now, this is, these are pretty much the numbers that were discussed, the next two motions for 2019 Road Program. So this is not going to affect us this year.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion D is approved, and we'll move on to motion E. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Motion to authorize the GPD group to provide engineering services for Woodhawk Road reconstruction in the approximate amount of $150,000.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Sabetta, seconded by Mr. Bellistria. This, again, was part of the discussion. Any questions from anyone? Mr. DeJohn?
Mr. Bellistria, we were talking about this road, where Mr. Fenaro was narrowing this road. But I never thought it was going to be coming to council this soon, until we got the figures from Mr. Gerson, and we studied this a little bit further. So as we all know, that road is 30 feet wide from curb to curb. Is that correct, Mr. Gerson?
Approximately.
Each curb is a foot?
About six inches.
About a foot, about a foot each side.
Total.
So that would make the road 28 inches? And now we want to take this road down to 24 inches?
Twenty-four feet.
Or 24 feet, I'm sorry.
Approximately.
Yeah. Sorry for that. So I guess I have a lot of concerns about doing that, and I am not ready to approve this. You know, for the engineering at $150,000. I mean, the residents need to be notified. I do have concerns with making that road a lot more narrow, narrower, because there's only one entrance in and one exit out. You have fire trucks, you have ambulances. How many units of condominiums do we have in there? So, you know, by making it narrow with cars parked on the street, I have a lot, a lot of safety concerns. So I never thought this was coming to council, nor did we make that motion in the minutes for it to come to council.
Bob, we did approve to go forward with it.
It was approved.
I don't see any motion in this Public Works, Mr. Bellistria? Where it says that? I'm reading the minutes right here. It says, "Mr. Bellistria requested the total cost be given to the committee with an itemized list of the roads and resolution be drawn up to be brought to council." Mr. DeJohn asked when they can anticipate having the cost. And then I see this next sentence here. Mr. Bellistria said, "The next scheduled council meeting, which is September 10th, unless there's a special council meeting." There's no official motion that this should have come to council.
Mr. Fenaro?
Mr. John, you have a lot of questions. I think I could clear them up. So making, narrowing the road is not something we're looking at right now. This is engineering to get the, we all know the road has to be replaced. What we want to do is get a jump on engineering the road. And those could come later. You did, you suggested residents involvement, and we're going to have that. So we're not saying we're narrowing that road right now. And the road right now was 40 feet, and is a huge safety concern with people speeding. So we looked at the safety issue, and we believe narrowing the road is going to help them, is what we talked about in the meeting. So right now, what's in front of you is to let GPD redesign the road, because we know it has to be done. It's failing and it needs work. It's not just a mull and fill and fix or a patch like we've been doing. So to get the competitive prices we've been getting, and bidding the work out in, at the end of the year, instead of waiting to the middle of spring, this is a step forward in getting our jobs engineered quicker and out to bid faster, that we get better pricing.
Thank you, Mr. Fenaro. I just want to comment on that, that I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people that live on Woodhawk and from the condominiums, since I do go to pull there a lot. And everyone thought it was a great idea to make the road narrower, because they said it's like a speedway. And I noticed myself going down there, there is a lot of room. And I thought to myself, can you get by? And there's always like trucks parked. There is a lot, a lot of room on that street. So it'll be fine being narrowed.
Just to clarify, this is going to be for the 2020 program. This isn't next year.
Right.
Engineering and Ashcroft is for '19. Genesee and, or Wharton will be on '19. Then the other street with Woodhawk would be for 2020.
Mr. Mano?
That road curb to curb is 30 feet wide, not 40.
Not 40.
It's 30 feet, curb to curb, all right? And as far as the speeding, that traffic situation there has been an ongoing problem for a long time. I mean, that's come up before in other meetings, safety committee meetings, and so on and so forth. At the risk of angering a lot of people that live up there, I think strict enforcement of the speed limit. If you do a campaign about a month long and write a bunch of tickets, you'll get people to start realizing that they can't speed on that street. They got to slow down. And that's a hell of a lot cheaper than what it would take to narrow out that road. I, you know, if you had a way in and a way out, other than what it is now, it's single access, then I might go along with narrowing the road. But as long as that is a one-access situation, I think that, but narrowing the road is going to create more problems. If anything, I would like to try to figure out a way to make another access point to that development. I think as far as the speeding is concerned, there's only one way you're going to stop that, and that's when you go in people's pocketbook. They get nailed, they pay, they're going to learn they can't speed on that street. It's that simple. You're going to get people angry, but it's a safety issue.
They do have a speed sign on there, and it's been there for probably two weeks.
Look at speed bumps. Speed bumps in the summer months. Take them out in the wintertime.
Mr. Mano, I'm sorry, Madam President. We talked about adding speed humps. They're actually humps, so you could actually plow over them and do that type of, but we're not sure about that yet. But again, just to reemphasize, this is not to narrow the road. It's not to do any, it's just for them to get a jump on the engineering for when we redo it in 2020. And I agree, there's some things that need to be looked at on that road. Maybe another point of ingress and egress in there, not sure. But we talked about maybe being able to put a bike lane on there, too, if we're going to, which would, which would lead to, hopefully, to the center strip, and then also be able to get them over to the, if we put a bike lane through to the corporate park and over to lander over there. So that's kind of like a general idea, we're thinking, but those are all things two years from now, Mr. Mano. So I think if we just, it's a good idea just to get on the engineering, to jump on the engineering.
It sounds like we have a lot of meetings to discuss this in the future. Mrs. Tressi?
Mr. Gerson, I'll be one second.
All right, no problem.
I know he's been raising his hand also. I know that years ago, they wanted to open that into Allen Bradley. And, you know, it just seemed to go by the wayside, and how that second, or another egress would happen. So that has never been done. But I don't know how you can manage 600 units in that apartment complex and the cars on the street. I don't know how you could narrow it and not say there wouldn't be some accidents going on. But my question would be, was this thought about so that you would be increasing the length of the residents' driveways? Because we have so many people come and complain. Is this your ulterior motive, but you're not saying that upfront? You're on camera now, so go ahead, admit it out. Because I look smarter than I am.
Whenever I'm recognized, I'll try to answer some of everybody's questions.
Mr. Gerson, please.
Okay, so all valid comments, I think. You know, we've kind of discussed that at Public Works, and obviously spoken here. The proposal, or the engineering is for the ultimate reconstruction of the road, whether that's 28 feet or 24 feet. In terms of engineering, it really doesn't matter. What would matter is if you said, hey, let's go with 24, and then we get the plans done. You say, yeah, let's make it 30 feet wide, or we go 30 feet, you say, let's make it 24. That's where changes would occur. Although the 150 is what you're authorizing, again, it's on a really rate contract, so we would bill on our early rates. If at any point you decided, hey, you don't want to do anything, you could say, stop working on the project, we could stop. We got a lot of preliminary work, which would be surveying before the snow flies, so we can get a head start on it. Once the snow flies, you might as well stop surveying it. And in here, we have talk about, in the first paragraph, we're talking about investigate the possibility of narrowing the road to 24 feet from 28. Also investigate the option of doing a bike multi-purpose link. So that's going to be, if you will, kind of conceptual layout. But we need to do some engineering to try to see if that will work. As for making the drives longer, yeah, if you made it 24 feet, someone's going to get a longer drive. It's possible both may get a longer drive. Not an ulterior motive, but yeah, you're right, someone's going to get a longer drive, or maybe both sides will. So right now, although it's $150,000, it's just so you know what the cost is, what we're anticipating the cost would be for the reconstruction of that. And there would surely be more obedience. And I think, Mr. DeJohn, you are right. You talked about having a meeting with the residents. We did that on lander and the other streets. I think that was well received. Doing it early, I think, would probably be helpful. As you know, you may get comments 50/50 for and against, so then you guys get to do the, whatever you do, and make a decision. So we'll follow your lead.
Thank you, Mr. Gerson. Anything else? Mrs. Snyder?
Thank you. Did we budget for this amount in the original road program?
I'm not sure what original road program was.
We spoke next year's.
Yeah, this is 2020, so...
Is it 19?
Probably 20.
Next year is next year.